Good afternoon, we're going to get started here, count us in. I just need the date, April. Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of April 8th. I would ask that you all rise for the singing of our National Anthem.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. Be, God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem. Now I'd like to take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretaker of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Moving on, I'll look for the adoption of the previous council minutes recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of City Council meeting held March 25th as presented.
Thank you for that councillor O'Connor, that motion is in order. I will call the question, please vote. Mayor Clayton in favor?
Pressy in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Now moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
I actually pushed my button during the National Anthem to see when Mike pushes his button, and clearly it's before then.
As soon as he sits down.
So I move that the agenda be adopted as presented.
That motion is in order. I see no one in the queue with questions, debate, or concern, so I will call the question, please vote. Mayor Clayton in favor?
Pressy in favor?
O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting today, for those who are watching online, delegations are welcome to the afternoon session at 3:00 PM, or if we're having an evening session, which we're not today, if we were, you're welcome to come to the 6:00 PM session. So today, we have one group who let us know ahead of time, and if you're looking to come to speak to council, sorry, there is an online form, it's relatively easy to fill out, we just ask you fill it out ahead of time. So there is one group that let us know that they were coming to council today, the Grand Prairie Airshow Committee, I see in brackets Mr. Bruce Tattery, so come on up, sir. If you could, I'll turn your mic on, if you and your guests could introduce yourselves for those who are watching at home, take five minutes to address council, and then council may have questions.
Great, thank you Mayor Clayton, and thank you, oh, I can just about swallow it at this point. Thank you for allowing us the time to give you a little bit of information on our airshow. We did apply for your large-scale tourism grant, and appreciate the opportunity to give a little bit more insight than just what's in the application. This is my, I'm the event organizer, and Amanda Erchuck is our deputy organizer, or sorry, director. sorry, director, event director, geez, and she's, basically her and I are attached at the hip here for the last couple of months trying to get this airshow off the ground. So with respect to the show itself, I don't think, I think everyone's heard of an airshow. It's an event that's sort of unique, and in our area, we haven't had one for quite a while. There's, I think 2005 might have been the last one, but it's hard to tell who or when those dates were. Anyways, we basically decided to organize an airshow as a group of Rotarians and several from all of the clubs, really, to do something different that hopefully will generate interest within the city for a couple of causes. One of them is our decoy community hub project, which the city has been generous about from the start, but that project is a $3.8 million renovation for the decoy Armory's building downtown, and we've been working at it for about five years, but due to COVID and everything else, we needed to do something to kind of give it a little more spark on the fundraising side. So rather than doing a golf tournament and silent auction sort of thing, we thought we'd tackle an airshow. And an airshow has a lot of moving parts. It's performers of all kinds, and as well as all your typical large-scale event sort of logistics that are involved. So definitely a fairly large undertaking, and it's going very well. We have a fully booked show as far as performers go. We have the grounds layout, everything sort of finalized for the most part, other than just ground-truthing a few things. And these grants are sort of the cash that we need out front to make it happen. So we had some cash from our previous fundraising to sort of get deposits set and get the show booked, but we will need a lot more money in the end to pay the performers for their full act, which is where this large-scale tourism grant will come in. And so I'm not sure if you want us to go in, I'd love to tell you everything about the airshow and really push it, to be honest, get people excited. I don't know if that's the form for this. If you want to know about it, a little bit, okay, yeah.
Why don't we, if you have a couple of high-level things, great, but I do have a full queue, so probably we'll get answered through questions.
Sure.
But if you want a high level, how many days, how many visitors do you expect, et cetera?
Okay, so high level, the show itself is two days, July 27th and 28th. We have a practice day on the 26th, so you will see a lot of weird birds in the air for three days.
Birds being planes, just.
Being planes, yeah, sorry, yes, jets and things. But two-day show, we're conservatively, we use the International Convention of Airshow Council metrics to come up with the number that we're expecting for the gate. So conservatively, we said 10,000 people will come through the door, and that's based on your guys' numbers for what the Grand Prairie area is, recent studies, times, the percentages that they come up with. These guys do a lot of airshows, so it's, we're confident in the number, and it could be north of there, but let's say 10,000 people is what we're expecting over two days. And as far as acts, we've got civilian acts, so we got a jet car, we got a parachute team, we have wing walkers, we have sailplanes that'll do 360s, we have multi-ships or two-ship acts that are tumblers, lots of smoke, and we have jets, T-33 jets that'll fly 600 knots, kind of close quarters with the crowd and everything else. On top of that, we have B-25 that we'll be doing a STEM program with where you can tour the B-25. You get to see it fly as well, but it's a big World War II bomber that you'll be able to tour, and then the kids will be able to learn some riveting and some Morse code underneath the wing. We'll have the yield, RCMP yield program, which is, they'll probably drag race one of our performers, and also the kids can learn simulators, simulated drunk driving and things like this for learning. Then we also have some USAF, or sorry, United States Air Force planes, four F-22 Raptors and four A-10 Thunderbolts or Warthogs, if you know what those are, are coming. We're waiting to hear what one CAD's sending. We don't have a lot in Canada to give, and there's a lot of theaters across the globe right now that we're supporting, so we won't know until six weeks out if we're receiving anything from the Royal Canadian Air Force. That's just the way it goes. We have asked for Hercules and a Griffin and a few other things that we can, but we don't know. We've got, we're in talks with the Loyal Edmonton Regiment about doing a kind of Delta Team, shoot 'em up live thing where they take some hostages and roll out and sort of contain a area like you'd see a military do. Again, those Delta Teams and things that are, with everything going on, where they can't commit, but they'd sure like to do it, as well as their color guard and hopefully their drum line, just to kick off the show. We will have the, the Canadian Recruiting Office will be there because they would love to sign up some local kids, and we have, part of our show is the decoy, and the other part is to sort of raise awareness for the Canadian Armed Forces and sort of send the message that freedom isn't free, we all experience it, but these people that you'll get to see at the show are dealing with the making it happen. So I think that's the key. We've also asked for tanks and lavs and things for setup. Again, just depends, we don't have what the US has. The US, you can call their base, and if they're free, they're gonna come up. With Canada, they just don't have the asset. So we're still in the planning stages. We have a fully booked two-and-a-half-hour airshow. Outside of the airshow, we've got the Keeshares Motocross Team, so you'll get to see freestyle motocross, bouncy castles, face painting. We've got a pretty good vendor area, like farmer's market, so you'll be able to buy some stuff and look at some stuff. A lot of awareness groups, we're giving them free entry, so if they want to raise awareness, they can put up a booth and you can talk to them about it. So lots to do that has nothing to do with airplanes, because some people don't, maybe aren't into airplanes, but they want something to do with the kids. Tickets are 40 bucks for general admission, and we're hoping that we get a good crowd, so.
I think you answered lots of questions that probably people in the queue had. I do have a couple members of council recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Bruce and Amanda. This sounds very, very exciting. My question relates about the static. Will some of these, the Warthogs and stuff, be on the ground for people to walk around?
Yeah, 100%. So all of those that I listed, you'll be able to see, all of the planes in the show will move from their performances to the static area, and you will be able to walk in amongst all the planes. Not sure how close you'll be able to get to the F-22s, because they're still classified and they're 360 million bucks apiece, but you will get to walk up a ramp and look at them from a little ways away. The A-10s, they're actually, they won't be making A-10s anymore, and this is the last year you'll get to see them at a show, so they don't even need a hangar. They said we'll stay out in the tarmac. So yes, you'll be able to walk in and see all these planes up close, yeah.
And will performances be repeated the second day?
Yes, so same, same, it's just so if you miss Saturday, you can still see it on Sunday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in, Amanda and Bruce. Nice to see you both again. Just a couple of quick questions in regards to the airshow. So you mentioned $40 general admission. Do you have any family pricing, or is it just $40 for everyone who walks through the gate?
Yeah, no, all we have is early bird pricing. So there's $25 tickets for seniors and youth, 40 bucks for your regular admission, and there's a VIP sort of premier seating area for $75, which gets you private, or you're in a fenced-off area with, you don't have to bring your own chair, you have your private kind of upscale bathrooms and your own bar, and then there's still all those same things for general admission, just you bring your chair, you pick your spot in the field because you're looking up, and that's the differences, so.
Okay, no, thank you for that. And this airshow, is it reoccurring? Like, do you plan to go year over year over year?
Yeah, so biennial is the plan, so every two years, just because it's, a lot of planning goes into an airshow, and honestly, to get out in front, to get acts like the Thunderbirds or Snowbirds and stuff, we were late a little, we didn't know it took two years, but we would like two years to do that going forward, and so.
So happy to hear you say that. As I was like, looking into it, I was like, most airshows are every other year.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
We actually scheduled the Blue Angels, the Thunderbirds, and the Snowbirds two years out, so we were already, when we were in, at the International Airshow Convention, they were already scheduling the jet teams already a year out in front of us, so.
Just didn't know.
Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the presentation, it's good. I learned a lot from your presentation. My question is, how are you navigating this airshow with our air service, Air Canada WestJet?
So there will be no interruption to commercial service to the airport at that time. Not only will it not interrupt our commercial air service, we also will not interrupt any traffic going in and out of the airport at that time either. So it's very important, number one priority, to make sure that our airport continues to operate as it needs to operate.
Perfect, happy to hear that, thank you.
Counselor Pressy?
Great, thank you. I'm just trying to understand what the layout on the land looks like. So what is the field that people are sitting on, and where's parking happening?
So parking will be, there'll be a couple locations within Grand Prairie. The main parking will be out of the Grand Prairie Regional College for those two days. There's 1,100 stalls there. Then the composite high school is another spot that we have available, but we just gotta finalize the, with the school board that that's, we can have all the spots, because there's spots available. Tentatively, they said, yeah, it sounds good, we gotta make sure that nothing is booked in the city for those places before our show. And then we're also looking at the St. Joe's on the south side, that parking lot in there, same idea, we just have to clear it, but we need approximately 1,600 to 1,700 stalls available to us, so we get 1,100 of them, we're locked down for that, and we're still working on the other two smaller parking lots. There'll be shuttles that leave from those to the airshow, so we can control the gate and the flow in and out. And honestly, the airport parking, there isn't a lot at the airport. We'd be parking on grass, there is an area available, we'd be parking on grass, and we're worried if we have three days of rain, although we need, we need all the rain we can get, it wouldn't be very good for our airshow getting a Honda Civic out of the field, so we're trying to keep it on dry ground.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, yeah, you bet.
Great, thank you, that's exciting. I'm also curious, what's the, what's the risk of smoke? Like, at what point do you have to cancel the show because there's no visibility for jets, or?
There is a number for that, and our, we've hired an air boss, who's the guy that handles who flies and who doesn't fly, as well as we have the director of the airport on our board. I don't know, like, I know, like, say with rodeo, because I have something to do with rodeo, that when it's a seven, the horses can't run. I have no idea what that means for an airplane. I think it's visibility more than anything for us, and I just don't know the number, but we have a guy that knows the number. I mean, this is a valid concern, for sure. We're using up tarmac space, and we're having an airshow right when the place could be on fire, but there's nothing, we can't control that, so we're pushing forward and just doing a, you know, hoping and praying. And we have insurance, obviously, for the show if we can't go.
Let's give you my very next question.
Yeah.
Echoing, I'm just gonna jump in, Counselor Blackmore echoing along the same vein of Counselor Pressy, in the large-scale tourism criteria, it mentions that the event must happen regardless, rain or shine. So what would be the plan for a, not a smoke event, but a significant three-day rain event? Would you postpone, how would you establish that?
We would still be able to proceed in the rain, people would have to bring their rain gear, and we can still have a static display at that point. We can still have all our vendors, we can still have our food trucks, and we can have our static displays going. It won't be nearly as exciting as if we get to watch everything in the sky, and then their loud noises and flying by, but making do with the performance schedules that we do have, we will still get to offer the static displays.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Blackmore?
Could you just say the dates again, please, just to.
Sure, July 27th and 28th.
27th to 28th.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I see no one else in the queue, so I thank you for coming. Delegation business is dealt with at the end, towards the end of our meeting, and our agenda's not that long, so you're more than welcome to stick around, or if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to leave. Someone will follow up with you following this meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Moving on to reports, item number seven in your package, council. First report today, item 7.1, Chief Bylaw Enforcement Officer Appointment, and I will turn that over to Chief Lamu for introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this appointment is in order since Mr. Mike LaFave, who was our Chief Bylaw Enforcement Officer until recently, has now moved to the Grand Prairie Police Service. So Helen Napier is now Managing Director overseeing Grand Prairie Enforcement Services, and we're recommending that council appoint Helen Napier as our Chief Bylaw Enforcement Officer for the City of Grand Prairie effective April 8, 2024.
Okay, opportunity for questions for administration, recognizing, no, now seeing no one in the queue with questions, opportunity for business arising, recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council appoint Helen Napier as the Chief Bylaw Enforcement Officer for the City of Grand Prairie effective April 8, 2024.
Thank you for that, that motion is in order. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.2, the Coordinated Care Campus renaming. Miss Hughes, a moment to get set up, and turn this over to Chief Lamu for introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Wendy Hughes, our Director of Housing and Homeless Initiatives, has prepared a report for you with a recommendation to rename the Coordinated Care Campus, so I'll ask Wendy to walk us through the report.
Welcome, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration and the renaming Subcommittee worked to provide council with a number of options to rename the Coordinated Care Campus. The renaming Subcommittee represented various relevant stakeholders, including one Coordinated Care Campus Advisory Committee member, one City Council member, two Indigenous representatives, as well as various city department representatives, including communications, marketing, and housing and homeless initiatives. Since 2021, the project has seen many changes and has remained flexible to community needs, notably the shift in to include a recovery-oriented system of care. As such, the Subcommittee worked on reviewing previous name submissions while exploring new alternative names. The objective of the renaming Subcommittee is to provide options that would best fit the full utilization of the building and to best reflect the significance of the program. Other considerations of the new name include, included legacy, context, values, and would be easy to identify, recognize, and pronounce. The renaming Subcommittee also considered Indigenous context, meaning, and/or relevance. The new name is required for administration to proceed with marketing, communication, signage, website changes, and to prepare for the completion of the municipal move within the next couple of weeks. The renaming Subcommittee reviewed, researched meanings and definitions, and evaluated all options. The renaming Subcommittee then voted to advance the final three naming options for council's consideration. Number one was Cedar Point. Cedar has ensured the survival of people for thousands of years and has become a powerful symbol of strength and revitalization. The deep respect for cedar is rich in tradition and continues to be culturally, spiritually, and economically important. Cedar is often used in Indigenous and cultural practices. As with all four medicine plants, including tobacco, sweetgrass, and sage, cedar can be used for smudging and healing purification and protection. Beyond Indigenous relevance, cedar is a hardy tree with roots that signify stability, family, community, and life. This option would translate easily to represent both the social housing and municipal operations. There are a number of names containing cedar, and it ranks high in popularity. There is one registered trademark with cedar included in a US pencil company. However, there is no risk associated with cedar for the intent of this project and building. Number two is Mosaic Lodge. Mosaic is a picture pattern made by placing together small pieces of glass, stone, and other material of different colors, shapes, and sizes. Mosaic symbolizes the tapestry of diverse people, which make up community. This speaks to the inclusive community in which we live. This name would be easily identifiable with the housing program, and the name also suggests a building and operation that values collaboration and multiculturalism, thus creating a welcoming and engaging atmosphere for those interacting with local government services. There are a number of mentions of mosaic in businesses, mainly in fishing lodges. There are no registered trademarks, however, there is a mosaic program. There are no registered trademarks, however, there is a mosaic program which is led by the mustard seed in other locations. And then the last option would be Grand Hope Landing. Hope is an optimistic state of mind and is based on an expectation of positive outcomes with respects to events and circumstances in one's life or the world at large. As a verb, its definition includes "expect with confidence" and "to cherish a desire with anticipation." This name would highly signify the support of housing programming, however, it may be less focused on the municipal departments. However, Grand Hope Landing could effectively communicate its role as a catalyst for positive change, a source of inspiration, and a hub for community connections and growth. The renaming subcommittee then engaged the Coordinated Care Campus Advisory Committee, the Coordinated Care Campus Resident Council, and the mustard seed to seek their final input. The results of the engagement survey are as followed. So first is Cedar Point at 39%. Second is Mosaic Lodge at 36%. And third is Grand Hope Landing at 24%. Based on the work of the renaming subcommittee and feedback gathered from participant groups, the name recommended is Cedar Point. Therefore, administration recommends council approve the renaming subcommittee's recommendation, Cedar Point, as presented. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. I'll open it up to council with question, for opportunity for questions, recognizing Council Blackmore.
I'm ready to make a motion if that's where you're at.
Back to you in a moment, okay? Council Berg, questions for administration?
Actually, I didn't have any questions. Again, I was hoping to do business as I was on this committee. But one of the things that I did want to just comment on is I did really enjoy the process that you put forward, because a number of names had come up, and although you'd narrowed it down to about three, I think we had about 20 that we'd worked on, and we vetted them to the positives, but we also thoroughly debated negative connotations and possible negative nicknames, because every building and institution somehow seems to get a nickname. So again, that was part of the process. Two was finding something that was universally acceptable, positive, and didn't create a stigma for the people or the building themselves. So it's, it was a wonderful process. I've been through it in private business before, but never on a government level, so my compliments to you and the team. Thank you.
Council Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you for that report. Can you just reiterate how you're going to balance, perhaps if this goes to Cedar Point, with enforcement services and the municipal departments? How does that balance? You had said a bit of it, how you're going to have that inclusion piece. How are people going to know that enforcement services and city departments are part of this Cedar Point?
Miss Hughes?
Thank you, through the chair. So we're going to do it effectively through signage, and of course, there's going to be communications. We will have the webpage that's updated. And then, of course, the departments that do reside in the building, we work closely with the vulnerable sector, and that is including enforcement services, mobile outreach, G-Prep, community, social development, and the Grand Prairie Police Service.
So will there be signage on the outside of the building as well?
Yes.
Indicating the departments?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Council Blackmore.
Because Council Berg was on this committee and wanted to do the business, I would certainly step aside for him.
Council Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move, and thank you, Council Blackmore, I would like to move that council approve the renaming of the Coordinated Care Campus to Cedar Point.
Thank you, that motion is in order, discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Council Teason, how do you vote? And that carries unanimously. Thank you for your information and your presentation today, Miss Hughes. Moving on to item 7.3, Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta Community Fire Guard Program. I will turn this one over to Mr. Lemieux for introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in front of you is a recommendation for a council motion to show support for an application, and the reason it's in front of council today is because there's a tight deadline. The deadline for submission of the grant is April the 12th. The Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta, or FREA, has just opened up a new grant program, which is called the Community Fire Guard Program. So basically, this program would allow us to hire a forestry consultant to help us evaluate vegetation densities using current GIS data and identify priority areas for firefighting access. Now, when you talk about a fire guard, you might wonder, well, fire guard in a municipality? Think more of it as a narrow access for fire protection. So there are several areas within our community where access is an issue for the fire department, so it'd be more like access for the fire department in high-hazard areas. So the grant application closed on April the 12th, and FREA requires a council motion that indicates support for the application, and that's why this motion's in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Recognizing Council Blackmore.
I'm curious, Mr. Lemieux, what the amount of dollars is we're looking at?
Mr. Lemieux?
Yes, so we're still working through the process in terms of how much does a forestry consultant cost? What I will say is that there will be no cost to the city. Our contribution will be gifting kind in terms of staff time to work with the consultant. But I don't have the exact number, but I will try and get a number for council.
Can I make the motion? Do you have other people?
Go ahead. How about I decide? Council Blackmore.
Okay, so with the mayor's approval and Councilor O'Connor's approval, I will move that council is committed to support the city's grant application to the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta, also known as FREA, community's fire guard program.
That, that motion is in order, opportunity for discussion or debate? Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to committee business, first item of committee business, council committee, the whole held March 27th. I'll recognize Council Bressi for this one.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council accept the minutes of the council committee at the whole.
Perfect, so that's adopted, the meetings of the council committee of the whole meeting held March 27th, as presented, seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor?
That carries unanimously. There is one item of business coming out of that committee meeting, Level of Service for Emergency Social Services, the Alberta Municipalities Resolution. And I'll look for introduction from Chief McEckern.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that we're bringing forward. It is a resolution for Alberta munis to provide, establish a provincial level of service for emergency social services. This is a resolution that is being supported by other members of G-Prep as well, and has been passed by the County of Grand Prairie as a resolution already. We're just bringing this forward for council's consideration.
Thanks for that introduction, opportunity for questions? If not, I'll be looking for some business arising from this item. Council Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council endorse the establishing a provincial level of service for emergency social services, Alberta Municipalities Resolution.
Thank you for that motion, that is in order. Call the question. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you for that. Item number, moving on to item 8.2, the Invest GP Committee Meeting Held April 2nd, looking for to Council Blackmore for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee Meeting Held April 2nd as presented.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Council Blackmore?
Thank you. Due to changes at the provincial government on March 18th to the Alberta Advantage Immigration Program, otherwise known as AAIP, our rural renewal stream program is being reviewed. There won't be an update today about those numbers, and once that review is complete and we're back on track, we'll be able to bring those numbers back again. Invest GP staff have been, have met with a physician who's considering relocating to our city. Meetings have also been underway with the surrounding First Nations to further knowledge sharing and building relationships. Work continues on the regional workforce front with plans to launch a workforce-focused website in a few weeks. And then in Investment Attraction, that's almost a tongue twister, productive meetings were held at the World of Ag Tech Future Foods Conference and at CERA Conference in Houston. Planning is ongoing for the Canadian Hydrogen Conference, which is in about two weeks, the Economic Developers of Alberta Conference, Site Link Site Selector Forum, and Peace Region Energy Show, which are all upcoming events. As far as arts and culture goes, upcoming events in the city include the Vesake Celebration April 20th, Mini Pop Kids, May 24th, Dinosaur Worldwide, May 26th, Stormy Bust Out, May 28th, Pride Society Rainbow Bright Teen Dinner, Teen Dance and Party in White Dinner on May 31st and June 1st, and the Queen Tribute on June 3rd. And throughout the month of May, there are many grad celebrations taking place at the Bonnet Centre, so congratulations to all those 2024 Grand Prairie and District grads. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that introduction. I'll move on to the next item of business, which is the item 8.3, the Financial Administrative Services Committee Meeting Held April 2nd, and look to Council Plott for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Financial Administrative Services Committee held April 2nd, 2024, as presented.
That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue, with discussion or debate? I'll call the question. Please vote.
Council Plott in favor?
That motion carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Council Plott?
Yeah, Mayor Clayton, there was several. We had some service area updates from Chief Whiteway, Assessment and Taxation. The residential RFIs have been mailed out to areas that will be re-inspected this year, and we're encouraging the residents to fill out these forms and submit them back or complete them online. Administration is still finalizing our year-end audit. We presented the committee soon. Through procurement, there are currently nine bids on the market, and we had a discussion due to our deciding not to go ahead with our stormwater utility model, the potential of a $3 million shortfall in this budget, so we'll be having more conversations about that. But Chief Whiteway queued it up for us to get our thinking caps on of how we're going to deal with that moving forward, so that will be coming to the next council meeting. And that's my report.
Thanks for that, Council Plott. Moving on to item 8.4, the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting Held April 2nd, and I will look to Councilor O'Connor for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to have council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting Held April 2nd as presented.
That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue, with discussion or debate? I'll call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councilor O'Connor, you had one item of business.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council approve allocation of 2024 large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of $50,000 to the 2024 Grand Con event.
That motion is in order, opportunity for discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Council Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just wondering what the plan is for the airshow now that they've made a presentation to council? My understanding is committee wanted more information from them is, are we hoping to talk about potentially funding them today? Are we hoping they come back to future committee? Just what's the plan for them?
My plan was to see what came out of the delegation portion of our meeting.
Well, I am happy to make a motion.
Happy to wait in the delegation portion of our meeting.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
Okay. Any highlights from your meeting, Councilor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Feisty this today. Okay, I had three items. One, the Youth Career Expo was a huge success, 99 exhibitors, 2,400 youth, 33 schools, participation by many city, fire, police, and enforcement, and in speaking to some of the businesses, they were thrilled with the uptake and very positive. Two, the Design Works hosted the under-15 Female A Tier 2 Provincial Championships, and the GP Knights took gold. So on the sports and development, wellness, and culture, on April 13th and 14th, there is going to be an invitation to the community to come and paint a puck, which will go into creating a large collage in honor of the Aboriginal Hockey Championships later in the first part of May. So this is a collaborative project between the art gallery, Grantburg Gallery, and the city, and the pucks were donated by Canadian Tire. So looking forward to seeing that. And the last thing is on April 9th and 10th, there is going to be two open houses in regards to feedback on the museum expansion. And that's my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks. Last time I counted, that was four, but that's okay. Moving to 8.5, Strategy and Communication Services Committee Meeting of April 2nd, turning it over to Councilor O'Toole for introduction.
The council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee Meeting Held April 2nd as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue, with discussion or debate? Call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Councilor O'Toole?
Yes, I'm just trying to get through here. Just, come on. Executive Services and Strategy Administration hosted a safe, state-of-the-city event in partnership with Northwestern Polytech, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the Grand Prairie Police Service. This event was available to view, is now available to view online. And under the city clerk's direction, the 2024 municipal census project is on track. Enumerators will be canvassing the community starting May 1st, placing door knockers on every resident that has a unique pin to the address, so people can go online and complete their survey from May 1st to May 24th. Numerators will return after that date, going to door-to-door for those who need assistance. And digitalization of the computer, or corporate records, is progressing very well and will reduce the storage space and enhance accessibility. And there's more to that, but you could read that online.
Thanks for your report, Councilor O'Toole. Moving along, no items of correspondence today into item number 10 now, delegation business, the Grand Prairie Airshow. Council Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would love to move that council, that council allocate 2024 large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of $50,000 to the 2024 Grand Prairie Regional Airshow. Just to speak to this, a city of our size, I think you just kind of expect there to be an airshow in our city of our size every couple of years. And so in some ways, I think this is table stakes for our community. I'm glad to see it coming back. But I also love that this is an ambitious airshow. It's, the acts sound great. What I love most about this, though, is, same with Grand Con, that it's a nonprofit association using this to fundraise, to build their programs that will go- fundraise, to build their programs that will have ongoing benefit to our community beyond the air show. So I hope it's a phenomenal success. I hope it's something that draws people from out of our region, see these awesome jets flying. And I hope it's something that raises a lot of money for the great programs that happen at Decoy Armory. That being said, you always need seed funding to get these events going off the ground. So I think this would be a great investment of council's funding. So I hope that this will be supported.
Thank you for that. Fine business is on the table, but if council did have questions for administration, feel free to jump in the queue with that. Otherwise, we can open it up for discussion or debate on the motion. Recognizing councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, one thing that didn't come out of the delegation was, this is the 100th anniversary of the Canadian Air Force. And there's a lot of air shows that are very busy down east, and not too many are that busy because the Air Force has chose to stick to the east and not to the west. So we're very fortunate to get the planes that we're getting, and we have a full show. Like, we're scheduled for almost three hours of entertainment. So, thank you.
And when councillor O'Connor speaks about "we," he personally himself is volunteering for the committee. This isn't a city of Grand Prairie-driven initiative. So opportunities for questions, discussion, debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Oh, sorry, councillor O'Toole. My apologies. And that carries unanimously. No unfinished business, no public hearings, there is no afternoon session. So I'll go to council roundtable, and I'll start with councillor Teason.
I think you should have started at the other end, because I'm losing my neighbor over here. But anyways, yeah, I don't have much to update. It was a rather, I don't know, uneventful. A couple of weeks, there was some events. But the first thing I'll touch on is, and I guess I'll work my way backwards, is today, we had, looking at the museum expansion. So we had pretty much a full house of council members and some administration to discuss kind of what we'd like to see in the museum expansion project, asking big questions and all that stuff. So just a big thank you to Charles for helping us be a part of the vision in expanding the museum and finding a layout that works for everyone in the community. On the 28th, another highlight was, I got to do another City Hall classroom with Kateri Mission School, this time with councillor Burke for the first time. I think it was his second time doing it. But it was a nice learning experience, as councillors bounce off of each other, the ideas and their comfortabilities. And I think the kids were well served that day, and had lots of great questions. And a good guide in the city manager chair by the name of Grant Burke, helping out the mayors there. So always a great time, and always good to help kids learn. Finally, I'll just talk about my external appointed committee, which is the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. Over the past couple of weeks, I had meetings for the Integrated Watershed Management Plan Steering Committee, as well as the Technical Committee work. We brought that off forward to the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance about a week later, on the March 26th, where we had our regular scheduled meeting. One of the things that I'd just like to highlight here is, maybe people don't look at water as a resource, but it is definitely a very valuable resource and growing in value every year. But groundwater is the world's most extracted raw material. To put that in context, about, on average, annually, about 982 kilometers cubed of water is withdrawn from the ground every year in this country. So it's pretty incredible that that number. And we still have water, considering that we're going through a drought pretty soon here right away, as we're told. But part of that, of course, we reviewed the work of the Technical Committee, the Integrated Watershed Management Plan, the health of the watershed, getting ready for AGM as well. One thing we got was a really awesome presentation from a couple of members of the, from Alberta Environment and Protected Areas. And what they were giving us the research on was the levels of nutrients, metals, and other stuff that they're finding at the mouth of the Slade River, as well as the Athabasca River, looking for largely contaminants and stuff in there. Some metals to note, because I've sat on Paza, I've sat on Mighty Peace Watershed now for almost 10 years, and I've always been pushing to do more testing on metals. And at least with Paza, they said that it's not there for the air to detect metals in the air. But I always thought that with water and the ground surrounding water, we might be able to find metal contamination around there. I know that we test for some of that stuff here at the city. Testing for metals is really expensive. But it was really brayed after we received this presentation from Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, that the testing that they were doing along the Slade River was also including the testing of certain metals that I've been advocating for for about a decade. Strontium, aluminum, silver, and barium. And they're looking into that and receiving lots of high levels of that. Now, some of it comes from the air, some of it comes from oil and gas production upstream. But these are all important things that we should be measuring. We're talking about the health of our watershed. Besides that, we set our date for the AGM, which is coming up in June. And the final thing that we have is, we have sent the Integrated Watershed Management Plan, after 10 years of being out there, back to the printers, so everyone can see our new goals, our new actions, and the work that we've done throughout the years. And I hope to bring that to council soon. Thank you, everyone. That's my report.
Thanks for that, councillor Teason. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. On the 26th, I attended the State of the City. And that was a very, very good event. It was a little different this year than we've done in the past, but thumbs up from everybody that I know that attended. I attended also Special Olympics 2025 meeting, the AGM for Decoy Armories and Foundation, and the Accessibility Advisory Committee. Also had a competitive sports meeting. And in next week, I'll have more information on both the competitive sports and the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. This last week, I attended the Canadian Recovery Conference. What a wonderful event. I met many, many people. They had room for about 1,800, and I think 2,000-plus people showed up. So fire codes were being strictly enforced, which meant sometimes the conferences that you wanted to get into, that were taking place, you couldn't get in because you weren't fast enough. There was ministers there. In fact, Minister Jason Nixon, seniors community social, was there. Mike Ellis is involved in the protection. Can't remember what his actual title is, but he's the minister. We had Minister Dan Williams from Alberta, Minister Tim MacLeod from Saskatchewan, and Michael Timpolo from Ontario speaking, Dr. Nathaniel Day, Chief Cody Thomas, Chief Dr. Charles Weaselhead, Past Treaty Seven Grand Chief, and Chief Willie Littlechild is a Cree chief. Marshall Smith from the Chief of Staff of Premier's Office, and Tom Kador from the President of the United States Special Envoy. And there was others. There was probably another 25 or 30 speakers that were there. Great presentations, very well attended. And the government talked about the new changes they were going to do with Alberta Health Services. So I would look forward to it next year. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. For me as well, I attended the State of the City, and that was a great function, to hear from our stakeholder partners. And if you didn't have an opportunity to go to it, make sure you go on the city YouTube channel to watch it in full. Additionally, that same day, we went to a meeting, an information sharing meeting with the county. So continuing to build those relationships within our community and region, we work better together. I attended the RCMP Annual Performance and Planning Meeting. And so I think here in the near future, the RCMP will have their public information out. So good to hear the good things that they're doing. I attended the opening of the Land Breathes at the Grand Prairie Art Gallery. And that is a Treaty Aid exhibition, curated by Jamie Morse from Ottawa. So she was there to speak to us. A fabulous exhibition showcasing the local and regional Indigenous creations and cultural teachings. So happy to go to that. Make sure you attend. It's free to go, and lots to see. And then finally, just a reminder for the Storm, it's called Tales From the Oilers Celebrity Dinner, on Friday, April 19th, 2024, at the Palmeroy at 6 o'clock. Craig McTavish, Jason Strudwick, and Bob Stauffer will bring some stories and entertainment in regards to what is happening with the Oilers. And this all is a fundraiser for the Storm. Congratulations to the Storm for such a fantastic season. They had the most participants, as far as people watching the games in the AJHL. So happy to hear that. And I look forward to our citizens supporting them in this celebrity dinner. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Bosch. Councillor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I only have a couple of items. One, I read the last three chapters of the book that I read during reading week to the Avondale 5 and 6, and they had all kinds of questions. Asked if I was a movie star. That was cool. Yeah. And then last, went to the second banquet and gala. And thank you very much. That's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Connor. Councillor Berg?
I was hoping there were some stories from that event, Mike. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Attended a few things, State of the City, which has been covered, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism, the search for an executive director continues. However, they are handing out tourism money for the summer through the Destination Marketing Fund. So they've been quite generous to date, but there is also significant funds also still in there. So get your applications in. Again, really enjoyed that Kateri Catholic School visit with councillor Teason. We had a lot of fun with that. And hopefully, they left with a greater appreciation of city council. I attended an Aquiterra shareholders' meeting as deputy mayor, which I think I have another week left. So it was quite interesting. All is good at Aquiterra, slight change within the board. But some of the questions that came out were, issues were the concern about drought. The river is low. But also, one thing that it was great to hear is that Aquiterra is working closely with GPREP in advance of another potentially volatile fire season. And last year, when we had the Dunes West Fire, a lot of the trucks were getting their water out of the relatively new water station out by Wembley. So again, Aquiterra could potentially again be involved. And so they're working in advance with GPREP. Museum Expansion Project, really excited to see how that develops. Also attended the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie opening. Just wanted to quickly add that Jamie Morse is actually originally from Lacklibish here in Alberta, but she has an Indigenous role with the National Gallery in Ottawa as of last year or so. So it's great for her to come back to Alberta and work right here in our own Art Gallery of Grand Prairie. And that, Mayor Clayton, is my report.
Thanks for that, councillor Berg. Moving on to councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, most of the items, the museum, the State of the City address. We also had a infrastructure cost-sharing conversation with county council last week as well, that most of us attended. My highlight was the Canadian Recovery Conference, along with councillor O'Toole and councillor Blackmore, and our chief Lemieux and a few employees. First conference I've been to that was more recovery-focused than harm reduction-focused. So I have to say, I really liked the theme of it. And Daniel Smith's, our premier's opening address, it was kind of surprised to hear that many areas within our addiction reacted deaths have been reduced in the last seven years, because that's not the message I think we generally hear. So more good work is being done than I feel like we're told about sometimes. One of the sessions that really hit home to me was mobilizing data to build inform tools. Shocking that I'd want data. But what I come out of that session with was really hearing the message that we need to treat mental health separately like we treat physical health. I think far too often, we think they're one-size-fits-all sort of approach. 30% of disability claims are for mental health now. 20% of employers deal with mental health each and every year. So those numbers are continuing to rise. So that was a little bit of alarming thing to me. Organizational stressors often exceed trauma as a primary contributor to psychological ill health at workplace, which was saddening to me. I had a good conversation on that with councillor Blackmore. And I would have thought that, you know, of all the work we've done on that, that the organizational trauma would be lower than it is. And so that's something we have control over as an organization. And so hopefully, we can continue to get better at that. For those that don't know, there's been some work going on with the Recovery Capital and how the Alberta Government's changing. So in spring, they introduced legislation that will enable the creation of a new provincial health agency. June 3rd, if legislation is passed, it will establish the corporate structure for Recovery Alberta. And July 1st, Recovery Alberta officially begins delivering mental health service and addiction services in our province. So I think that's a positive step in the right direction for our province. So great conference. First time at it, would definitely go back. That's my report.
Thanks for your report, councillor Plot. Councillor Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I want to thank the mayor and the city manager and the other people who participated in the State of the Region, State of the City address. I really liked the format. I thought it was engaging. And I think we all learned things about other organizations, such as the Chamber of Commerce and Northwest Polytechnic, that we maybe didn't know before. So I thought that was a great event. I attended a downtown association board meeting, where Grand Prairie Police Service and bylaw enforcement were there to talk about the steps that will take place as the public security unit moves off of our books and that role downtown is taken over by that police service. I'm encouraged to note that that should be a relatively seamless exchange, and the people who live and work downtown will still see good protection and a good level of safety. I did attend the RCMP Annual Performance Review. I was online. I enjoyed that. I always find those events interesting, especially the questions that kind of come out of nowhere. And often are the kinds of questions that really are most informative. I attended an emergency meeting with the South Peace Archives. South Peace Archives is making a change to their bylaw. Currently, any municipal government that provides funding to the archives has a seat on their board, which means their board is becoming very large and not at all workable. So the recommendation was that members who are appointed by municipal government are not voting members. And so that will reduce the amount of people they need to have on their board. If we were still voting members, they would need, the appointed members could only make up 25% of their board. So with seven or to 10 municipalities providing funding, you can see how large that board would have to be. So at their annual general meeting, which will be at the end of May, those bylaw changes will be voted in. And then finally, I also attended the Recovery Conference. Most of the things that I thought were exceptional, councillor Plot and councillor O'Toole have talked about. I wanted to mention the establishment of COR, which is a Canadian Centre for Recovery Excellence. This is a research and data gathering organization established by Marshall Smith, the Chief of Staff, and Premier Smith. And while it is based in Alberta, it's really, its intent is to be sharing the learnings and the data that they accumulate internationally. And I also had an opportunity to talk to the ADM, Minister Williams for Addictions and Mental Health, to question him about the recovery center that we're all waiting to hear about. He is very positive that we will hear a firm public announcement within the month, and that there is no issues going forward at this time. So that's good news. And I, if I had any concerns at all about the conference we were at, is that the focus was really on recovery and not particularly focused on mental health. Mental health and addictions do go hand in hand, but there are lots of people who deal with mental issues that are not suffering from addictions. And I don't want to see that population that population lost, because for one thing, that encourages them to travel down the path of addictions, which of course we don't want. But I am really positive that this will be a better approach to addictions and mental health than our neighbors to the west are taking, and I believe we will see good success. That's my report. Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, councillor Blackmore. My report is relatively brief. I wanted to thank everyone who participated and attended, the state officer, Mr. Burke, as well as the president, Vanessa Sheehan, and the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Tanya Oliver, as well as John Resbit, the superintendent for the Grand Prairie Police Service. I thought the format was, went well, appreciate administration and the work that they did to put on the event. It was well-attended, it went well, and now you can watch it online for free. So I think it sort of ticked a lot of boxes for people. If you wanted to come have lunch, you could. If you wanted to watch it for free later, you can. Also had the opportunity to have coffee with a urologist considering to move to Grand Prairie, Dr. Kobd, and he, I understand, has now signed on to come to Grand Prairie, so it was great to meet him. Had a Mitzi City Mayor's Caucus meeting, where we talked about a new resource that is being brought on by the organization to support in data collection and information sharing. They collectively, we, as an organization, have hired Canadian Strategy Group to not only do data collection, but to utilize the group in regards to our advocacy priority initiatives, and really to further and advance the conversations that have already started with that group. Had the privilege to have coffee with our MP, Chris Workington, who was home for a few days, and catch up on how things are going there, and catch him up on work that we are doing. Also, as mentioned by councillor Berg, or councillor O'Connor rather, the U15 Tier Two Girls Hockey Championship was here, and I had the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of council and the organization. There were six girls teams, and I asked some mums in the arena how they thought the Grand Prairie team would do, and they thought that they would place third. And then what do you know? They dug down and they won the entire championships. So well done, Grand Prairie, well done to the girls team, and thank you to all the parents that put on that event. We really have done an excellent job as a community, in my opinion, stepping up to be a game city, and this is just another one of those events that we exceeded the expectations and had a great event. So thank you to all the volunteers and the parents who helped put on that event. Also attended, I was, went away, had an opportunity to go visit some family during spring break last week, and with that, had, still had some work to do, had to jump on with the time change, a 6:30 in the morning call, that was wonderful while I was away, but had a privilege to speak with the senior administrator of MP, Minister Rodriguez, Minister of Transportation. That was, the Community Rail Advocacy Alliance had a meeting with the senior administrative, or a Zoom call, to talk about how the North has impacted on rail disparity and services that we still continue to face. So that was a good call. And last but not least, just because we're ending a little bit shorter, I'll remind people, if you're looking for information about the City of Grand Prairie, we have an exceptional opportunity. You go to engage.cityofgp.com, you can sign up for newsletters. We also have a text service that'll tell you when your snow removal was coming to your neighborhood, or when there's a closure at a facility, and it's immediate, it's very brief, it's great information, so I encourage people to sign up for that and get information instantly from the city. With that, I will call the meeting adjourned and wish you all a great rest of your day. Thank you.